To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry for the wording. It's starting to make a little foggy. Just bumped everything by 20 minutes, so. Labor Day will start at 7:20 and Jacobs will start at 7:45.
I can be quick.
Okay, great. No more remarks. Chris, presentation on Section 8 here.
There's been a few questions. The timing and the process of budgets, I wanted to take 10 minutes just to kind of let everybody know so that there's no mess or through circulating that can be misinterpreted. The budget process is progressing. As of last Saturday, I had built a document that includes budget expenditures that we're going to incur in here as well as most revenues that we're going to receive from here. There are several question marks that's still outstanding, so obviously we can't present a budget yet. The second half might be, that will be held in the interest of the budget. And they're going to be premature for this budget, mainly on what the commission had recommended for proposals, so we're holding that. There's also some IGAs and figures that we still need to get from the county that will help us determine the timeline and the work staff in this department as well. But with all that in mind, there's simply not enough data to have it used in the documents. I can look at a lot of the revenues, I know what's going to happen there, but on the expenditure side, there's just a lot of question marks. Once we have at least the majority of those questions answered, we will provide a document to you, as well as publish it on our website and advertise it in paper as required by state law. There is a 30-day period. You have to announce a hearing, a public hearing, 30 days in advance of that public hearing. And then, once the public hearing has concluded, you can adopt your budget. So timeline, it's realistic, you're probably looking at a budget being adopted in February, formally adopted in February. But we can proceed with a revenue and spending plan sooner in anticipation of what's coming down the pipe.
No fun intended there?
Coming down the pipe. Coming from the pipe and down the pipe. So that's where we're at at this point. There are, and one of the things that you want to try to steer people away from is the feasibility study that assumes that you were operating an ongoing city. First year, there's several revenues that are collected either by the state or franchisees, et cetera, that are remitted to the city after that first year has concluded. So for cash flow purposes, you may be earning the money in 2013, you won't receive the cash for it until 2014. Once 2014 hits, then you're on a regular cycle where you can start to consistently see revenues coming in. For example, the city of Dunwoody, which has a very similar revenue structure as Brookhaven, their first year budget had 15 million in revenues. They're now over 25. So once you get past that first year and the streams start coming in, you have a much more realistic expectation of where you're going to be on a year-in, year-out basis. So that's, you know, that's one of the things that we're watching very closely, realizing that in the first year, you really have to balance needs and wants, establish realistic expectations, and just get a good sound footing in that first year. Start doing some significant planning and goals in year two, and usually by the end of year two, into year three, you're going to the force with a lot of the capital and the staffing levels that you're wanting to complete, et cetera. That's the overview. I'd like to certainly open up any questions you may have regarding the budget or the budget process, and hopefully with that, we're back on track.
During the notice period, are we going to, do we anticipate having a series of public hearings? Or how, what, other than just putting it out there, what, how do we present the budget?
You will have, you will have at least one public hearing. I would expect at least one work session with council to actually go through and address the major components of the budget. For example, how much are we going to dedicate to pothole repair? And again, just being realistic, in year one, I wouldn't overpromise and underliver. You're not going to have a lot to do, many big capital projects in your first year. But there will be public input. The hearing is about 30 days in advance. Anyone's welcome to look at that and comment to the municipal representatives or us at staff to do so during that time period. And the budget, the budget process is fluid. It can change throughout that 30-day period, it usually does.
Will this be a rushed period for public input? Or will this be a 30-day?
No, it is definitely 30 days. That's why just, if nothing else, the law's not going to let you do this before that year. That's going to be the battle.
Are there some revenue sources that started growing, but we don't like to follow?
Two significant ones, which amounts for at least 25%, 30% of your normal revenue structure, one of which is the Georgia Power franchise check. That money is usually distributed the last week of February. Dunwoody negotiated with Georgia Power to get 10 months of that in their first year instead of waiting until February. But by the 10th month, our property taxes were coming in. We didn't need the cash at that point in time. So it really didn't, you know, looking back and knowing what we know now, that didn't really help us any, but it was a comfort level knowing that we had that extra money. But that was, that's one. The other is insurance premiums tax. The insurers within, across the state, the all-states, the state farms, et cetera, they remit a tax to the state commissioner's office, insurance commissioner's office. That money is collected throughout the year. At the end of the year, September, October, the insurance commissioner's office will make a distribution based on the city's population, proportional to the state's population. It's not based on what's collected within your jurisdiction. It's based solely on your population as of 2010 census. That process means we have to get the census bureau to actually determine what our population was in 2010. But that takes a couple of months as well, we'll work on that. But by October of 2014, we'll get our first insurance premiums tax check, and then it'll be annual from there and then on out.
We were talking about the revenues, we'll be getting some this year and next year, but what about the expenses for state public work on potholes and paving and other types of maintenance issues for that? We wouldn't be engaged in a full year of that initially, right? So we wouldn't be budgeting for a regular year of paving or potholes. And obviously, like the parks, we don't pick those up until fall. We'll still be paying the cap for the maintenance of those. You know, I just want to make sure that the first-year services budget is staggered as well, of course it is. But can you just talk a little bit about that? How, what percentage, but what level of service you would expect for things like police and paving or pothole repair and stuff like that in your first year?
Probably the best thing I can do is kind of mirror what happened the last time in the cap city incorporated. I recognize, holy, we're not Dunwoody, we don't want to be Dunwoody, but our revenue streams are very similar. And our operating expenditures are going to be there, but we're similar because you're going to manage the two. We did no major paving projects in our first year. We had a couple hundred thousand earmarked for pothole repairs. There was a significant pothole that just couldn't wait and needed to be addressed. We did so. And we told everybody upfront that it's going to take a couple of years before we can start doing this. And then we delivered on that promise in years two, three, and now four. In first year, I wouldn't expect much capital to be able to go out there and do a lot of road projects or even a lot of the smaller pothole repairs that have been there for the last five to 10 years to speed it up. As for the police staffing levels, we can look at based on the IGA that's agreed upon within the county and how soon we need to ramp up and at what levels we need to ramp up. A lot of that's going to come into play once we know what the other services are going to cost, what the IGAs or the counties are. And I just think it'll be a little premature to speculate until we know what those contracts are.
Sure, but counter to relevance to what we have tonight with public works, you're going to be considering that contract. Is there a, not comparison, but say you do, I mean, are, a number of potholes going to be tied, I mean, are you going to fix it, be tied to the contract award of public works? Correct? So you'll have to set those expectations with the contractor as well.
Well, exactly. We'll approach the contractors and say, you know, based on where we see ourselves in year one, this is what our expectations are, what's an appropriate staffing level for those expectations. You know, it's okay to amend the contract at a later date to add additional staff when you have additional resources to do additional work. I would rather start conservative and then build up than realize you've got so much staff but nothing to do with that staff.
I have a question for you, Chris. During this transition period, changeover from the county to the city, what can we do to make sure that we don't, sort of say, leave money on the table? You know, the things that we talked about with this occupational tax notice to our businesses in here, are there any other things out there that we can do to make sure that we capture the revenue in anticipation of being up to speed and in operations?
The biggest thing that we can do is make sure that we don't miss our deadlines.
That's a part of the revenue.
For example, the 17th, we know that's the day that we're going to take over services. We need to make a work release to go on the 17th and make sure that infrastructure is in place, that you get the forms, the labor, et cetera, is there, ready to operate 8:00 AM on that first day that we can. Now, once that part's done, then you've got other processes that you could implement to identify additional revenue streams. When we incorporated in Dunwoody, we found, in first year, we found 400 businesses that had not previously been licensed with the cap county. They weren't dodging the system, they just didn't understand they needed to do something like that. We reached out to them, identified who they were. They apologized and fully cooperated, said, you know, we just didn't know what do we need to do. You know, we will, we being the finance and admin staff, will take on that role and work to start identifying those companies. One example that we did and will do here is the junk mail that you get on a regular basis. There are companies that sell those mailing lists. We went and bought them. It was a little under $800. That list generated over $200,000 in revenue, including one business that owed $40,000. So there's small, immediate things that you can put in place to start identifying those companies down the road. And whether it be billing permits, we can make sure that we communicate our billing permit data with the tax assessors office for those additional assessments that need to go onto the bill. So things like that.
Another thing I'd add to what Chris just said, also having a clear handle on inventory and all the fees that the county charges, whether they're doing impact fees or these special assessment fees that were collected based on the community approval. And we would want to capture those fees and have them come back to us. So we'll be looking for any kind of unique type of fee that is not customary to everybody that files for billing permits or such a good budget saver trade for this. There might be other special fees or even special assessments, maybe a sidewalk improvement, whatever that might be. But we need to look and understand their entire fee schedule. Seeing if it belongs to the city.
Does Dunwoody Police Department, if you know, have a fingerprinting process where they charge people for that? So do they allow this, like permits to carry, you gotta go down the memorial drive to get your fingerprinted? I wonder if that's something that can be done in municipalities?
I think, I'm not sure if we do it for purposes other than our own needs, such as requiring permit for alcohol. I don't know if we do it outside of that. I'm not saying we can't, I just don't know if we are.
So one more question. With fines and portures being such a big portion of our revenue stream, is that something that we'll be able to start proceeding on the 17th? I guess most of that is taken, at least taken, is that correct?
Almost all.
So those taking, those tickets that are written by the cap county and the, we have our IGA, will those on the census or come into the city?
I don't know what date, but it will be before the IGA expires. It happened pretty early in Dunwoody.
I think we have to notify, I don't know, municipal quarters, the 30 days out is up and running, is that right?
Mayor, I believe that they're going to be ready about February the 1st. The part of the IGA with the places would be to work out the methodology where the cap police department, folks saw their tickets in the system. And that's what they looked up with, the cap officers who need to cooperate with the cases.
And that has to happen before fines and portures, right?
Well, theoretically, you could go and ask for the fines and portures out of the recorder store, but by the time, by the time they worked out the system of the cost of collecting, we're young, we're sure we'll do what we need to do. So the way to get it is to send it to your board.
This is a good example of the lesson learned in Dunwoody. We knew we wanted to do court eventually, but we didn't think we were going to have it until we set up the police department. One day, officers just started showing up with boxes of tickets, saying where he wants. You know, lesson learned, you know, we know that's coming, and so we're going to appear at the court before that day, knowing that those tickets are coming in.
Do you know when the IGAs will be available for the statutory? Does, how to have to defer a bill on that one?
We're working on the IGAs, we're really going to try to do the easy ones first. The things that we, there's a lot of problems on, but I would think that we will be doing, we'll be working on the police, at least, and starting on that in the second week of January. They're going to bring us the ticket, say. But, and they'll continue to work whether we have an IGA or not because they'll work under the provisions of the charter with or without an IGA. But the IGA is really a document that tries to quantify what the costs will be so everybody knows and everybody can prepare for it. And it's a planned activity rather than a litigated activity at the end of the day to try to determine where the costs are. And I believe that with the amount of cooperation that we've been getting from the cap county on every single subject that we've had, that we'll be able to do a lot of work at some point.
The police takes back January 1, right? Of course, we're paid up till the end of December. So if you're doing it the second week into the new year, it means that we're already on to the office, whatever it is they're going to charge us. So we don't know what that's going to be like?
The default is the actual cost. And the actual cost is the kind of things that Mr. Pike figures out. And we'll, that's one of the, and I can be sure that the folks at cap county don't figure it out, the actual cost, and that's what you're going to negotiate is what is, what's included in the cost? You know, are you paying for the SWAT team, private narc, are you paying for narcotics investigators? What proportion share are you doing? All the different items, how much of the overhead you're paying for in terms of the command structure? And those are the kinds of things that get down to finding out what your true price is. It's not the direct cost of a policeman in a park, but you can pretty much figure that out. But it's the embedded cost of the infrastructure that's spread across the county and how much of that do you take on is your share.
Chris, do you have anything else?
I just moved, I'm sorry. Last question, I've had this, this followed. So just a quick calculation, I'm thinking this portures, about $100,000 a month revenue for the city. What, I don't want us to slow that revenue stream down. So you're saying that as soon as we do that, when this court is opening? Is that correct?
That's right.
And where, and what steps do we need to take before, will we be able to meet that February 1 deadline?
There's nothing else that council needs to approve the contract to award court services for that. We've got a meeting with them tomorrow to discuss specifics on the court startup. I would not envision a February 1 being a problem, but we'll confirm that for the public.
This tenant space is the last piece.
We visited that yesterday, and we went through, we went through the components of it, what kind of build out that would be, and there is, there may be two walls and some significant painting. But the, but the build, the truly the build out part of it, they can, they can get it done.
One thing, the way you just said about fines and portures. I would just want to make caution as to that we don't become reliant in a big way on fines and portures in our budget. It's not something that I don't want to build our city on particularly. So I just don't want, I want there to be a low count on that, you know, number last.
Well, just to kind of lay that groundwork, you want the fine revenues to be whatever they end up with. No place cheap worth its weight, it's going to have quotas or kind of mandates, that's the what that is. You're going to have nancies, and you're going to have some that don't write any. It all evens out at the end, but, you know, the tenant, they are what they are. The really only discretion on that revenue level is the what fine amount the judge and court clerk establish for each of the citations.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Next briefing on the cap recreation bond, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I have Lenny Felton, and Lenny is going to give you an overview of what he had and tell you about the recreation bond and the cap county's position of it at this point. I don't know how detailed it is, I don't want to go in. If we could just talk about on a high level of where the county's position is, and so they can be informed, because that is really a question. Back in, I guess it was 2006, 2007, cap issued bonds, recreation bonds, and they had detailed what they were going to do with that money and the documents that were spent, that they said how much they're going to spend on one park. For example, Dunwoody, they had, I believe, I don't know, it was taking $12 million or $14 million a day earmarked towards Brooklyn Park. When the legislature passed the new law two years ago about purchase of parks by municipalities, part of the law, besides that you pay $100 an acre of the park, is that if there's any funds specifically that the citizens of that jurisdiction made out of debt, the county of the park in law, that whatever remainder that had not yet been used was to be turned over to the municipality. So under that division, we had requested what we saw as the remainder, about $7 million. And of course, as we anticipated, the cap said, which we know. And of course, their stance on it is, there were never earmarked specifically things for certain parks. We're generally speaking, but that's what it's being compared to. And so that was part of it, the other part of it is always special. So we had initiated a vacation, they're going to have to on this particular Brooklyn Park, part of the park, that's supposed to be a Brooklyn Park.
Lenny, if you could point out some, what they might expect rather than what Dunwoody's doing, if they want to go forward and start exploring what the potential is for using recreation bonds on parks that they may purchase, what would you see is the method of where they have to go to get to a place to go ask the county, this money?
Well, firstly, you have to purchase the parks first. This money doesn't come to you under the law until you own the park. So purchasing the parks is rather simple, under law, you send them a letter saying, I want this park, there's a check for it. And by definition, as soon as you send them the money, they're in possession of the old apartment. And they're required by law to, you know, file the deeds. Another issue that we've dealt with a couple of parks today.
Is there not any formula where you can take the property taxes, tax bills, people have been paying interest on the bonds in this city, and extrapolate out how much we're entitled to?
It doesn't, it didn't work that way in the recreation bonds. There's documents that we knew existed that literally, when they were advertising for these bonds, the CEO at that time sent out a bunch of different things, saying, we're going to spend this much on this park, this much. They basically enticed people in the area of Dunwoody, New York, to vote in favor of these bonds with the expectation that a certain amount of money of that $50, $60 million was going to be used on recreational facilities and industrialization. So it's not based on population, and there's no rule formula, it's, you have to pick up.
If you're going by what they promised, then they are going to hold to what they promised, or you got to find another way to?
But isn't there a dispute over what was promised? And now that it's not in writing, is that part of the official documents of the bonds?
Well, I guess that's the disagreement Dunwoody has to come up with.
There's still litigation, right? Three years later.
So you're saying we got to use their documents, saying what they promised. If they're saying that those aren't good, well then why can't we follow that and say, it was proportional, what we're paying in taxes?
Well, because that's not the way that the law reads it. The law says whatever the money was earmarked specifically for the recreation facility you purchased, they don't.
Do we know how much, do we know how much was earmarked for facilities and for payment?
I don't have that list. I don't know what the models exist that is to.
How do we get those? My ballpark was 15 million, et cetera.
You have to, there's a whole collection of documents you have to basically look for. I'm not sure exactly how the $7 million figure came up. I don't know if Chris and Bishop feeling have been looking at over their finances. I know that a lot of the council members in Dunwoody have long been on the case and looking at. So they've been very proactive.
So these documents, where do we get them?
The finance department would have them.
Prospect is.
You have to, you have to ask for the documents.
They weren't, they weren't in the official statement of the bonds. They weren't in either the preliminary or the official statement. These were reports that were put out by the cap's staff and CEO that showed how they expected the bonds to be allocated and used. The documents were, I don't know if it was intentionally distributed or people just got ahold of them, but there were several, including some of Dunwoody's first council members, that had copies of these documents. So whether it was to hold them accountable, because I don't think they envisioned what they'd be eventually used for, but they had copies of these documents for the parks that were going to be used in Dunwoody. So I haven't looked at the documents to see if they list all of the cap parks, but I would suspect that they did one, they probably did all. And they're out there, just got to track them down and find them.
Can we do a free request on that? Anything to do with seeing the parts?
That can be done, yes. We have done that as well. The mono documents were received back, they contained less than this whole.
Or you did that?
Yes.
Sounds like it's a pretty easy request with the fill.
Yeah, they say they have nothing. But I could literally file the lawsuit and give them a bunch of discovery documents. They'll take your position. to take, and they'll take your position now that we're coming up with this actual.
If we could just, whether, how we're doing Dunwoody, if we can structure what you would suggest that we would do here in Brook Run, right? I'd rather go through.
I mean, you could do an information request for all the documents that they have released regarding the creation bond, not just official bond statement, but any of these reports.
We can do a Google search, too.
Yeah, but you want the official ones, or you want to see what they'll give you as far as.
Are they doing the same data that you got?
Possibly. Obviously, there are different parks, and we specifically asked for Brook Run, so.
Rather than belabor the point, I think we have the money's out there, and we know there's going to be a hassle getting it. What I'd like to do would be to have staff put together something if we, and bring it to the agenda at some later date, so we can authorize them to vigorously pursue those funds, you know, come up with a plan, and we can talk about it tonight, but let's put it on a later agenda. Let's recognize that they're there and that we want to pursue them, but let's ask them, ask staff as part of the IGA to see, you know, what the best course of action is and approve that some way.
You're looking for staff to identify the strategy, identify the means and which to, we're here all this time, and any and all.
And that information, right? And to make that possible, you know, what's the number? And if there's a chance that we can plug some of that into budget and.
I think that the Governor's Commission Parks Committee has explored this area in great detail tonight. Can I open it up to, Terry, you're on the committee, wouldn't you? And isn't there something that y'all have looked into?
Yeah, we've got some documentation stuff. Item ideas.
Mike, you're a Trump member, we're talking.
No, just had a little.
I think we've got a great resource with the Governor's Commission.
Saturday morning, you'll be receiving the court presentation.
Can your IGA negotiate if you brought this up at all with them? You think it'll cause some consternation if you did?
Mayor, I think that, I was, I was asking Lenny to prospect it, because I think he can analyze a path.
Why can't we say before, you have to purchase the parks first? Just about to ask the governor, I guess, if we don't.
Well, we deserve, if we don't purchase the parks for a few months, the governors think we should be doing before that.
Well, what we can do, what we can do is we're going to gather all the information that we have from our folks at the Governor's Commission, and we'll start gathering other information as we can find it in terms of the kinds of data. We have some experience in the one to look for, and we'll continue to work on that. And then, then we certainly can talk to the, talk to the county about it. We know what their position is at this point in time, and we'll gather the evidence board.
And there are many sources, the government, just the Finance Department, plans and documents, capital proof plans that the county developed that would define how certain improvements would be paid for, the sources of fund, we could certainly look for that, too. And we'll develop that and develop it in a court form and present it at a later council.
Okay. This is the reason, you know, this is on the agenda, so because we have a meeting Saturday with our Parks Committee, and we want to, we want to be briefed before we brief them on anything we know. So that's, but thank you for coming. Thank you all for. Next, any reports or presentations on community development? I guess we do have some. What time is it? So we're starting a little early. So who's first, the collaborative?
I don't know, please call the police. I'll.
I have a question to Mr. Riley. Is there any reason that you all need to be here?
Huh?
Could I suggest that you all could better spend your time when you're ready to go on the evening?
Glad to do that.
Want to pull under here?
Children's stay papers.
Yeah.
And we have tape, so we can help solve.
All right. You all okay with that? I'm going to pick you out.
All right. We got lots of work to do.